...this evening. Okay? So if you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All the housekeeping motions we had in place, such as raising your hand to vote, are all still in order. And I'd like to thank the same folks who helped out on Monday by helping out tonight. Joanne Nizkoba, Chase Jackman, Lucas Marcosoli, Juliana Magrane, and our sound engineer, Eric Kilber. Thank you, folks, for your help tonight. And this next comment, I'm afraid, is going to endanger my next haircut. However, it's Mr. Morandi's birthday today. You know, if you've ever been out with Joe, you know he doesn't drink. Well, he'll, at 21 now, he'll be able to. Okay, let's start with Article 9. To amend Article 2 of Representative Town Meeting with, on Town Meeting Accessibility, it is moved and seconded by Ways and Means, as is printed in the warrant, with the following addition of, and to authorize the town clerk to renumber the sections thereafter, as there is an issue with one of the numbers in the article. And such as the strike through on 1.2.2 should not be there. Okay? So that's the article. Ms. Sun Tung, I believe you are speaking to it?
Yes.
Take it away.
Good evening. So, we're back with Hybrid again. A lot of you are going to remember that we have discussed this before, we have voted on this before. General Bylaw Review Committee has revamped this article based on some of the objections that came up last time. So I'm going to give you a quick recap of how the discussion last time went, some of the objections we were unable to address, and the changes that we did make to try to make this more workable for our town meeting and how we want this body to run. So, the reasons why we believe that Hybrid Town Meeting is important is accessibility, participation, inclusion. There are a lot of people who run into issues, whether it's sickness, work trips, childcare, who are unable to show up to every town meeting, for whatever reason. I myself have missed due to work trips. Other people miss, like I said, maybe they have a hard time driving at night. Maybe they aren't even running for a town meeting because they know that their participation would be limited. We feel that this could open the door to having new members come in, to having more involvement. On top of that, we do understand that there are ADA accommodations that need to be met. One of our members is participating remotely right now. But, our thought is, if you're weaving accessibility into your organization, your event, then accommodations become irrelevant, because everything you need is already there. So those are the reasons why we feel that this is necessary, that would be helpful. I will say that other towns have passed this already. Brookline, Plymouth, Natick, and Whalen are already successfully implementing this. And we feel this is where town meeting is going to go, if not tonight, then in the future at some point. The outstanding objections and how the discussion went last time, the two that we were able to address are, one, people wanted to maintain a requirement for an in-person quorum. That language has been added into the article as it's written. So an in-person quorum would still be required. The other one is a type of preregistration, so you know who is going to be attending virtually. It also limits the number of people who can do that, because you have to go hand-in-hand with having an in-person quorum. So it limits that number to one-third of the body. The objections we could not address in the language involve efficiency. A lot of you said last time you were worried about dealing with the technology, dealing with people who don't understand how to use the technology, the meetings taking too long, the technology going down, having inadequate discussion, if you have so many people online. All I can say to that is, there is a learning curve. Those of us who have worked remotely the first few weeks or months of COVID, understand that it was a bit difficult for some of our coworkers to catch on. But it's something that eventually, as it becomes the norm, it becomes easier, it does become efficient. It's just getting through those growing pains. The other one, one of the big ones was cost. And I do not have a number for you. I cannot tell you how much this will cost. There are lots of different types of technologies. I've spoken with a moderator about some of the things he would want to see. I've spoken with other people on other committees about what they would want to see. You'd want to see how everyone else is voting. You'd want an opportunity for, you know, better discussion. I personally don't like WebEx, but there are a lot of other platforms. Again, I can't tell you how much those cost. I don't have those numbers. Commitment. There were a lot of people last time who felt that if someone isn't willing to show up and sit in these seats at town meeting, that they're not committed enough to be a town meeting member. There are people who thought that because they had to sacrifice in the past and were unable to participate because they had issues with childcare, and they waited their turn, that everyone else should have to wait their turn. And to that, what I have to say is, it is not our responsibility, is not our privilege as town meeting members, to gatekeep being a town meeting member. The only people who should have a say in whether someone representing them is committed enough are the voters. And I feel like we should leave it up to our constituents to determine whether someone who is running and saying they might have to show up remotely, or they can only show up remotely, let the voters decide whether they feel like that representation is adequate. Some of the other objections are in this warrant itself. In a letter from Town Council, I have discussed that with Town Council, the issues about potential discrimination. We have language that we've included in this article that I feel overcomes that and makes this actually avoids liability for any type of discrimination. I'd be happy to answer questions about that as well, for any of you that have them. So, that being said, hopefully I've given a fairly accurate recap and made those objections and arguments for you. I know there are strong feelings on both sides, and I appreciate the input. I would like us to look at this as a revamped, changed article and focus in on whether the changes we've made work for our town. That's what I've got.
Okay, let's hear from a couple committees. Rules Committee, Mr. Senesi, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rules Committee voted two in favor, five opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Senesi. General Bylaw Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Chair of Finance, uh, yeah, whatever committee it is. We voted 5-0-0.
Thank you. I guess now it's time to open this up for discussion. Comments from the body. Mr. Lozano, do I have that correct? Gentleman right here in the middle? You. I'll keep guessing, don't worry.
Blaze Lieber, Precinct 6. I do like the sort of idea of this, this change, get more people involved. Some people have legitimate excuses why they can't be there, and, you know, that, I understand that there's just, there's two things that concern me about this bill. One is, not bill, but this bylaw, one is the one-third, because yes, one-third is, if they are all, if, say, everyone of that one-third decides to go online, you would technically still have enough people to do quorum, but as we know, you never have 100% of people showing up to town meeting. So that's cutting it a little too close, I think. So maybe, maybe a smaller, a more limited amount of people. And the other thing, too, is I would, I don't want to encourage people not to come in person. I would want it to be, you know, provide an excuse. We're not going to track them down and figure out if they're telling the truth or not, but you should at least have to say, "On my honor, I can't make this meeting because of XYZ, and that's why I'm not here." So those are just my two, my two concerns with the, with the language as it's written. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lieber. Comment or response?
Through the moderator. So, the issue with having people give a reason is that's where you open it up to discrimination. So, let's say, for example, you have a man going on a business trip versus a single mother who is at a childcare. If you are putting reasons in front of the clerk and saying, "Which one's more valid?" Discrimination, gender discrimination. There are a lot of ways that could go wrong, which is why we have language in saying it's first come, first served. It's the most objective way to have it. And our thought also is that people with real disabilities know they have those disabilities, know they need the accommodation. There is no limit to how early you can request it. So I would almost view it as a rolling in-place. I have this, I'm requesting it the minute this night ends for the next one, for January. But that's why we don't have any kind of specifics on the preregistration, even though some people are saying, "I want to make sure that someone isn't using this just because they don't feel like putting their pants on." You can't put the clerk's office in a position where they are making that decision.
Mr. Lieber, yes, go ahead, Blaze.
I wouldn't suggest that the reason has to be approved by anyone, just that you're stating, "I'm not coming because of this." Does, it's, there's no, it doesn't have to be approved by the town clerk or anything. It's just you making a record of why you think you don't have to show up to town meeting. It's no judgment whether it's valid or not, it's just that you're willing to say, "I don't feel like I can meet, come to town meeting because of this reason." And maybe that's still discriminatory risk, but just, just that was my intention of it, not that someone would judge whether or not that's acceptable or not.
Mr. Collins.
Is it working? All right. Dan Collins, Precinct 6. So you said earlier that you didn't know how much this is going to cost. And so, if I'm reading this, it says shall quite a bit. How can we pass this without also passing some sort of budget to go along with establishing that this is going to be a thing for the very next meeting?
Ms. Sun Tung.
So I've been passed a note about cost, saying that most equipment is already in place and set up, just for the ADA requests themselves. So incremental costs probably less than $5,000. I've been told, and I don't know how accurate this is, maybe someone else can, can speak to it, that if it does wind up being a cost of over a certain amount, that town meeting would have to approve spending that money also. So this would be a multi-step process, if that is the rule.
Mr. Boyden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyden, Precinct 1. I have two questions. If I understood correctly, and maybe I'm wrong, is a, is there a requirement to have a quorum present in person in this room, and then other people can call in? And the second question I have is, currently, in the, in the in-person format, a member of the public can come in and, at the discretion of the moderator, raise their hand and be addressed and allowed to ask a question or make a statement. Would that still be the case remotely? They would be able, the public would be given this access link, and they'd be all able to call in?
Ms. Sun Tung.
So, the answer to your first question, which I don't fully recall what the question was, but I wrote down, answer is yes. And, and, second question is, this would only be remote access for actual town meeting members?
Follow-up, Mr. Boyden.
I just didn't see that text in the document. Did I miss it? That says that an actual quorum must be present in person?
It would be town meeting.
Unless I missed it, I mean, I may have.
Sorry, slightly distracted. Can you repeat that question?
I didn't see in the reading of the actual text of the warrant article that it says a quorum must be present in person.
Yes.
I didn't find it. I didn't find it.
So there is currently a requirement in the bylaws that you need an in-person quorum requirement. If you remember the last time we did this, we had an article specifically to eliminate that. So, because we are not bringing that portion of this through, then the rule as it already exists stands, where an in-person quorum is still required. So that's, that's how it works, is because we're not actively getting rid of it.
Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Bell, Precinct 6. There are a couple of issues, one of which is that you're talking about keeping a quorum amount in the facility as opposed to online. In order to do that, how are you going to control, you get such an amount of a third of the people who are going to be online, and people that couldn't make it anyway may not be here, you may never get a quorum in this assembly because everybody's not here. That's an issue right from the beginning. Second, it's never been an issue with the fact that people couldn't make it to a meeting and still wanted to participate. They just didn't do it. And I think you're taking away that in-person, the back-and-forth discussion, everything that is important within a forum, you're taking away from this body by putting too many people online. I think your limit is too big, I think one-third is too much. And I don't feel comfortable supporting a change like this to this body, which is a legislative body in person, just because it's inconvenient for some people. It always stands, if you can't do it, then don't run. There's a responsibility to being a legislative part of the body. I don't see why we need to change that part of what's important as part of our assembly.
Your response?
Mr. Campbell.
This is working, there we go. Chris Campbell, Precinct 1. I could not disagree more, Mr. Bell, with what you just said. So I'm a father of two. I'm only here tonight because I have no other option with a sick child and sick wife at home. These are the realities of younger members that are here. For us that talk about commitment, I'm also on Ways and Means, I'm also on the Burlington High School Building Committee. And if you look at my attendance, it's pretty stellar. And thankfully, for Ways and Means, I've had that flexibility at times to join Hybrid when I've had a sick child at home, or my wife has an event out and I just need to be home with the kids. This is the reality of what we're trying to talk about. We have lost 30 members from last meeting to this meeting. That's a third. And this is a traditional thing that happens from night one to night two to night three. If we had this ability to have Hybrid, I would guarantee we would see more consistent numbers. And if you look on our Hybrid meetings that we had after the pandemic, we did have consistent numbers, night one, night two. These are real things for our memberships, to be, members to be able to participate. If we want to have this in-person, we have to build that culture as a town meeting. It has been on the boards that I'm on. I know the importance of being in the room on Ways and Means meetings. When we had this discussion on Ways and Means about Hybrid, it was four days after my second child was born, and I left my house to go to have this specific argument with, discussion with Ways and Means, so they can see the impact on our families. And yet, that whole rest of that Ways and Means season, I still had a mostly in-person attendance. We need to give universal accommodations to our members, so that they can participate and still have their voice. What are we afraid of? More people will join? More voices will be heard? This is not what a democratic body should be afraid of. We should sit here and say, "We want access." If there's things that we want to fine-tune on this, great, let's do that. But let's not deny everyone the ability, if they are duly elected, to participate. And then maybe our boards will start to see more members be able to participate, and we can get more councils and boards and opinions up and running. So for all of those reasons, I am here tonight to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. I applaud the prior speaker's commitment to town meeting, and like many of us here who had young children, when I joined 20-plus years ago, I too had to weather through the same exact issues that you did. But I came here because I was committed as a town meeting member that if I were voted in, I would make it here. And if I couldn't, then I would have relinquished my position for someone else that could. We shouldn't be claiming that we have to accommodate. If we had to accommodate for everything that everyone had to deal with, this place would be empty. That's the reality of it. We wouldn't allow this to happen in Washington, DC with our congressman. The place would be empty. We wouldn't allow it at the State House. It would be empty. And we shouldn't, we shouldn't be allowing it. Our constituents expect us for a commitment to come here, and it's only three times a year. Three times. It's for multiple nights, but it's three times a year. It's not this overbearing commitment. And as far as accommodating, if there's anyone in this auditorium tonight, as far as ADA is concerned, I have made it here every, practically every meeting for 20-plus years. So please don't, I find it insulting when we start talking about people not being able to make it here. I've made it here through the young kids, through the sickness, through not having someone to watch them, or having my parents come over to watch them as I come here. I have made it here more times. I've sat on Ways and Means, as you have, for five years. I've sat on committees, I've sat on school building committees. So again, it's insulting to sound like, "Oh, you're the only one that's had to deal with this." Many of us have had to deal with this over the time. And I don't sit there and complain about it. This is what I signed up for, this is the commitment I made to my constituents, and this is what I'm going to do. And no, that web or whatever system you're going to use is so inefficient, because I have, during the cold COVID issue, have sat in there, and you can't get recognized. And that's a disservice to my precinct if I can't get recognized and I can't argue a point on an issue that needs to be discussed properly. And you can't do that back and forth on that system, not when it's overburdened with, it could be 12, could be as few as, as six. It doesn't matter. When you do that, there isn't that back and forth, and people can't see on TV, when people are raising their hands trying to be recognized, and that constituents look at it and say, "Thank God I have someone there that wants to speak in favor or against an issue that they're, that they're willing to, to listen to." So no, I am deeply offended that we're even discussing this right now with some of the issues that people are bringing up. It's insulting. And I urge people to please do not support this. Vote against it.
We have Mr. Miller online, then I'll get to you, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, David Miller, Precinct 4. First, I want to say, somebody asked about cost. The cost has already been spent. Ken Gordon got Burlington $100,000 to upgrade technology, and this was about, was under $4,000, under $5,000 to upgrade the auditorium, and that's already been done. So there's no, no, it should be no further cost issues that I know about.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Murphy, Precinct 5. Back when COVID hit and we all were home doing the Hybrid thing, I think everyone, me included, hated that, right? Those were miserable meetings because we were new at it. And, so I think the answer is not to blow off technology. The next time we get together, it's going to be 2025. There is no reason why we can't do it better than we did it before. And there was an example right there, somebody who's not in the room, who's online, following the discussion, raised his hand and got to, got to share his opinion. This is insane almost to me that, that we would go back to doing things the way we used to, just because we used to do them that way. The world has changed, we have the technology, we can use it better, and all the things that this young lady explained are right on the money. We have to make it more accessible, we have to make more people participate, and make it easier for people to participate, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Harrington.
Jeremy Harrington, Precinct 2. I just want to mention that while I know this is a commitment, and I do show up every time I can since I've been elected, you know, to live in this town and to afford it, I have to travel for work. I want to vote. I have had to leave a meeting to catch a plane, miss the next meeting, and come back for the third meeting. I would have been able to vote in that second meeting, and I had opinions, and people voted for me to speak for them. So to disallow me to vote if I'm traveling, you're silencing the voices that voted for me, and that, to me, is undemocratic. We need to do this, and I'm glad we've made the changes, so there's an in-person quorum, so we don't lose this discussion. This is critical, but so is hearing all the voices. And I fully support this.
Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Eiler, Precinct 6. First, I'd just like to get a clarification perhaps from Town Clerk. In both the electronic and the paper version, the part where it says the Town Clerk will do it first come, first serve is crossed out. Is it correct that that is not part of the proposal?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. So, so I'd like to point out right now, as the proposal stands, there's no objective criteria specifying how people will be selected to be in that one-third. So if more than 42 people decide they would like to be remote, there's no criteria to do that. And furthermore, there's no specification of who makes that decision even. So that's a pretty big hole. So that's a pretty big hole. If we put that aside for a second, I think the second big issue with it, and by the way, I think that the idea of having more participation is great, and I certainly sympathize with people taking care of people at home and so on that need to be remote. But so I think, but there are a couple of operational issues. So one is no criteria to decide who gets to do it. So is my reason better or worse than your reason? The other one is the quorum issue that was brought up earlier, and I'd like to just do a little math for you to show why that's really an issue. If you look at the last nine meeting days that we had over five town meetings, of those nine days, there's only been three days where we had ninety-nine people or more. So why is that interesting? If forty-two people want to be remote as allowed by this, which requiring sixty-four quorum in person, you would need to have attendance of one hundred six people. That means of the last nine meeting days, we would not have had quorum for six of those nine days. And furthermore, the three days of dead of quorum were all in May. So of the five meetings, four of the five meetings, we wouldn't have been able to meet at all based on the numbers here. So that's obviously an issue. You might argue, okay, we lowered the number. If you lower it even down to thirty-five, you have the same issue. If you lower it furthermore, now you start running into that issue of who gets to be in that limited number of people that can be remote. So there's some workability issues here. Now, in the backup, it mentions that in May of 2022, there is outstanding turnout, and that was a hybrid meeting. So the argument might be made, as has been made, that with hybrid meetings, you have better turnout. But the data doesn't support that. If we look at, so if we look at that May 2022 meeting, the average attendance for that four-day meeting per day was one hundred three and a quarter. If you look at the May twenty, I'm sorry, one hundred five, one hundred five. If you look at the May 2024 meeting, which was also a four-day May meeting, the average attendance was one hundred three and a quarter. So we only got two additional people in the hybrid meeting compared to the non-hybrid meeting. So the data doesn't support the idea that hybrid meetings have more attendance. You might think it should, and it would be great if it did, but there's no data that supports that. So the point is, the attendance, as we can see from the data, isn't necessarily any higher, and we will have trouble making quorum with the rules as specified here. So if you want to have a very accessible meeting that doesn't happen, this is a good set of rules that causes that to happen because we won't have quorum most of the time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Di Tochi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Di Tochi Jr., Precinct 6. My understanding is Lexington already has hybrid town meeting. They already do this. Acton already does this. This isn't like an unprecedented thing that we're talking about here. So other towns are doing this, right? Let's talk to them. Let's figure out how they're doing it. But they've already executed on this. We're behind, right? And listen, times change. We need to give people the ability, and the most important thing is we get participation. So I don't think, I don't see why there's any reason why we can't do this. Thank you.
No, we won't. Who did I say? Ms. Nash, please.
Thank you. Mildred Nash, Precinct 3. I don't know if I am so devoid of friends that I find one of the main reasons I come to town meeting is to see people that I don't otherwise see. This is a body that I really feel connected with, and if I don't see them running down the road, I get to see them at town meeting. And so when I was looking at this warrant article, the question I had was the whole business about you had to call in two days ahead of time, and there could only be thirty people. And my thought, and I can hardly wait to be told why I'm wrong because I could be wrong, but I was thinking that we should stop the 1.2.2. We shouldn't begin it to the, oh, we should get rid of the number of town meeting. It should just be that if you can't come, you let somebody know. My problem is that when I went to committees, and I look at you, I think of when we wouldn't have had a quorum except Adam called in and we had a meeting that went on because people came remotely and it made it work. I think that worked. And I would think that what Chris Murphy said, and I don't always agree with Chris, but on this, I have to say, if I can begin to go with the times, it would work. When we had the remote meetings during COVID, and I hate to bring it up again because Kathy was so nice to help me tonight, but I often can't hear what's being said. When I was home, I could turn up my speaker, and I heard the town meeting better at home than I'm hearing it here. Kathy gave you good advice on how to talk into the microphone, but I'm afraid some of us aren't passing it. But I keep thinking that I'm not good at technology. I sometimes, but never at town meeting, had trouble figuring out who was speaking. When I'd go to a Ways and Means meeting remotely, I could never tell which member was speaking or planning board. But at town meeting, I think we haven't worked that better than usual. I think we have a long way to go. But I think that the problem is this takes care of people who are conscientious enough to find an excuse to call two days ahead so they can do something that they wouldn't be here. But that may not take care of the people that have a sudden emergency that can't show up. And I think we should stay a little bit more open-minded on this. I hope you will at least give it another thought before you vote it down because Mr. Eiler's point, I always listen to you, is that if we don't have a quorum, we wouldn't have had the last number of meetings. And that could be relieved by this vote. Thank you.
Ms. Huntun, I understand you wish to explain the quorum issue?
Yes. So what I said earlier, I was a bit off base with. And I was basing what I said as far as the in-person quorum requirement on our actions that we took last time, which was to deliberately remove a requirement for an in-person quorum. Attorney Mead has brought me a specific rule in Article 3, 11.2, that actually clarifies a majority of all the members shall constitute a quorum. So there is no in-person quorum requirement in our bylaws. And because we have no language in this article requiring it, then there is no in-person quorum requirement that goes along with this. This is what I was just told.
Town Council.
If you were to adopt this bylaw, you would also have to adopt Article 10, which is a special act. So it would override the open meeting law. So an in-person quorum requirement would not be required as it is under the open meeting law.
Gentlemen back here, behind Mr. Harrington, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Spilberger, Precinct 4. Sounds like there's some issues with this one-third number. It seems high for some people. Why was one-third chosen?
So that number was chosen so that we would be guaranteed to have, oh, sorry, so that we could ensure a two-thirds in-person requirement. I'm going to acknowledge what people have said as far as if everyone in that one-third cap decides to participate remotely, and we're missing one person here, then we don't have that two-thirds. What Attorney Mead just brought me kind of makes that issue moot so we wouldn't have to deal with that. What I would have said to that before having this additional information is, we already have kind of a reliance on people agreeing to show up. So as far as what happens if we don't have enough people, like tonight, if we didn't have enough people, the meeting just wouldn't happen. There is a risk with an in-person meeting that we don't have enough people show up. So that's what I would have said to that. But whereas there is no in-person requirement by default, it wouldn't matter, and the number, the cap we have in there would just be a cap to be a cap.
Follow-up, I mean. So there's a chance that we would not actually get that number. It may not be that high. I would suggest if this does not pass, to have a poll and see how many people actually would not, would actually want to be online. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks. Then we'll get to Ms. Everett.
John Sacks, Precinct 7. A third seems high to me. It seems to me that we needed an exception for people who can't make it, but a third seems high. I would like to suggest, I know amending is a real pain in the neck, so I'm thinking maybe come back in January. And I think ten percent should be about the limit because then we would still have a lot of people. And we have somebody at home. Sometimes you've had three or four people at home for really good reasons. A third seems high to me. I would say ten percent or twelve people is the limit because after that, it does get a little bit hard to manage. That's my suggestion.
Ms. Everett.
Thank you, Moderator. Corey Everett, Precinct 6. I heard some people speaking about data earlier, and I just, I wanted to say that the idea thirty or forty people would choose to attend virtually is plainly absurd. It is obviously preferable to show up in person. All this would be doing is giving people the flexibility to remote in if they absolutely have to. I don't think it's going to be abused. People can see my arms move in person. People can hear my voice in person. People will have more of an effect on others when they're speaking in this room. So it seems plain to me that no one would choose to be remote unless they had to be. So I just ask people to consider this. I know the quorum question is moot now, but what I think is going on is what my friends would like to call boomer mentality. It was hard for me, so it has to be hard for everyone. Don't even dream of a better world. Don't even dream of things changing. I see this all the time, and I see it tonight. So I would ask you, consider how we can make things a little easier for people who need it. Thank you.
Mr. Monaco.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. What I want to say is subtle, but it's, to me, it's very important. So here's an example of the subtlety. During this debate tonight, did town council come down to the front and confer with Mr. Martin and Ms. Huntun? Yes. And that was an unpredictable event, and it was very important for them to work on something here live in the body. And that plays into what I consider to be a compromise if we don't have a live body. And it's the human interaction, and it's the freedom of conversing in subtle ways. And that, I think, is a compromise if we were to make this hybrid. I really wish we could do it. I just think that's a compromise you're going to be faced with. Secondly, if it's such a great idea, why don't we just have the whole thing remote? And the point is, it isn't that good idea. You do need people here. So again, it's a compromise to accommodate situations that are very, very valid. Mr. Campbell, the gentleman up back, I understand that, and I wish we could find a better way to get this regulated. I'm sure we can get it implemented. But you need to bear in mind that there is a compromise when you start to do this. And I'll give you one more example that I caught. I was sitting over there last night, and Mr. Davidson was going on and on and on about debt exclusions and debt and blah, blah, blah. And then, then some, I'm not trying to be insulted, but you'll get the point. And then somebody said, and the interest rates are going down. And Doug wanted to say, yes, but it won't have that dramatic effect. But he wasn't quite sure. So he points up back and he says, Mr. D'Nizio, how do you weigh in on this? And John goes, you don't do that remotely. There are subtleties in here that are actually make this meeting much more powerful. And that's what I'm after. I'm after, as a representative of the entire town, for us as a body to be as powerful as we possibly could be. And I agree, when people can't get here, that's a problem. So I don't know how to solve it. We haven't, I don't think we've quite got it figured out. So just be aware of that. I have not been in favor of this basically for those reasons. The power of us collectively together, face to face, with a mic, and I hold my beer. Thank you.
Mr. Sinessi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. Now, I spoke earlier as the Rules Committee, for the Rules Committee, but I'm speaking for myself at this point. But I'll say that I was one of the two Rules Committee members that supported this when it came to Rules Committee. I thought compared to last time when there was no quorum required, I thought that they were rowing in the right direction of something that might be workable for this body. If there was one concern, after I cast my vote, I still cast my vote in favor at Rules Committee for this measure. But I do think the number is a little bit high. So what I would like to do is I would like to motion an amendment, and I think we can do this by literally changing one sentence in this warrant. And you'll see that it reads, the number of town meeting members attending via remote access under this bylaw shall be limited to one-third of the total number of town meeting member positions. I would amend it to say, the number of town meeting members attending via remote access under this bylaw shall be limited to fifteen total town meeting member positions. And, you know, I think everybody in this room's made great points, and it's, you'll never hear this from me, but I agree with every single one of you that's spoken. There are good arguments on both ways. I just think that this should be kept to a minimum. I think the, you know, if we can accommodate Mr. Miller tonight, I think we could probably accommodate fourteen more people that way. But don't make it too clunky on the overall infrastructure. So if I could get a second for that amendment?
Mr. Sinessi, as with all amendments, I need them in writing and signed. Very good point, Mr. Connors. We have an amendment on the floor. Let's, Mr. Sinessi get up here with a signed copy, and we will discuss his amendment. It's on the floor already, Nolan. It's been moved and seconded. I know, these blessed rules, they get in the way of a good time. I know, these blessed rules, they get in the way of a good time. Do we have a signed amendment?
Yeah. Turn the mic off for a second.
Okay, we have an amendment that has been moved and seconded. And I will read it here. It is to amend the line that says, "The number of town meeting members attending via remote shall be limited to one-third." We'll change that to, "Shall be limited to 15 members." Now, a discussion on the amendment. Ms. Laurie.
Sharon Laurie, Precinct 3.
Please get a microphone, wait till it works.
Sharon Laurie, Precinct 3. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think you might want to say a maximum of 15.
It's limited to 15. Ms. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christine Warren, Precinct 4. I agree with this amendment, particularly since there are people who feel that, I think, think that a lot of people would opt for remote. I don't personally think so because I think it's better to be here in person. But maybe you're right. And so clapping it at 15. I know for our precinct, we have one town meeting member who's on a business trip in Denver who wanted to come. She was willing to participate remotely on a different time zone. But she can't. She's not allowed to. And then we had another person who suddenly couldn't come because they had a sick child at home. So, you know, we are, and these are younger people with families who work full-time. And they're, you know, they are very committed to town meeting. And I think there are limited situations where we should allow this and allow them to participate. Thank you.
Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Bell, Precinct 6. Where in there does it say that if I have the correct abbreviation, ADA participants get to choose first because they couldn't possibly get here or would be, they'd be excluded out of it because it doesn't allow them to make that choice if other people get in line first?
Ms. Huntoun, can you answer that?
Hello? Okay. So the ADA is a separate consideration. It would not be included in that limit. If you need an ADA accommodation, you cannot be refused based on that. So that would be a separate number. They would not come under the umbrella of 15. Does that make sense?
Well, I understand what you're saying. But again, that starts to change the percentages again.
I, I understand that. I think that 15 is, is fair. It's a lot lower than what we have. But I think if that's the common ground that addresses the concerns, I think that gets us where we need to be to at least have this in place for people like myself, Mr. Harrington, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Donahue, those of us who have work commitments or childcare commitments. I think it's been said that most of us like being here. Mr. Everett, explain this. I enjoy coming in. I like the energy. I love the discussion. I like meeting most of you. So it's...
Can you elaborate on that one?
Just trying to keep it light. But no, I think, I think there's, there's a range of opinions on how it would be utilized. And I've heard people say, oh, you'd run up against this one-third cap. People would be dropping like flies wanting to be remote. I'm of the opposite opinion, which I've heard other people are kind of on the side of, we want to be here. We are committed. I mean, who just decides to sign up for town meeting for the, for the fun of it? We all want to be here and we want to be a part of governing our town. So I think it, it does people a disservice to say, because you didn't show up, you're not committed. When I haven't shown up, it's because I've had work commitments and I've been out of state. And I watched on my phone from the hotel and it was painful to do that. I would have rather participated. If we had this in place, I would have been able to participate. The member that Ms. Warren's talking about, who's in Colorado, would have been able to participate. So I think it would be good to have this option. I think it's important that we have this option. And I think that the numbers that have been discussed as far as whether it would have been utilized in the past, whether it would have been helpful in the past, I think we need to look at the fact that this is the body that is here. And the people who have run for town meeting and taken these spots are people who knew that there was an in-person requirement. If people know that there's a chance that when, if they travel for work a lot or if they have childcare issues from time to time, if they know that there's flexibility, I think other people would be more willing to run. And I think it would be very beneficial, as some of us have explained, to those of us who are in here with other commitments but who also want to serve our community.
All the way up to back, please.
Rich DeBona, Precinct 3. Mr. Moderator, I have a question. So what happens if there's a technical glitch and let's say Zoom or that screen goes down and we're in the middle of a vote? Do we stop the vote? Do we not count their vote? Do we go out for coffee? What do we do? Coffee's good, by the way.
You know, that's a, that's a good question. I would say we'd have to stop the meeting. These other people are already in attendance. We can't just cut them out, whether I might wish to or not. They are, they are registered attendees and they deserve the opportunity to, to listen and to vote. So regardless of the number, I would say that we probably have to stop the vote.
If, if I can follow up on that, because that'll influence which way I vote. If I'm choosing to be remote, for whatever reason, and no one's going to determine how valid my reason is, but I'm not here, I think that's a risk I take that I missed the vote. Something happened out of my control, I missed the vote. We shouldn't stop town meeting to accommodate something like that. If I go out for smoke and I miss the vote, that's on me. No, thank you.
I would, I would defer, oh, we're supposed to be debating the amendments.
Well, what this would come down to is, you know, hold on a second. Is it would be a call of the moderator. And I've told you what my call would be. Point of order, yes.
Good discussion, but we're supposed to be, we're debating the amendment right now. We have a...
We are debating the amendment, correct. So we're on the amendment, limiting it to whatever that number was, 15 people. Mr. Sacks.
Precinct 7. I just want to say that I tossed out a number of 15, of 10%, which is 12. But I was too lazy to write amendment. Adam Sinessi, my bosom buddy, comes up with the number of 15. I think we should vote for the amendment and then vote the article in. Compromise is what makes life go on. Please.
Mr. Ruffield. We haven't heard, heard from you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Ruffield, Precinct 5. I'd like to point out that we have the screen right there and we can see, Dave, I think his name is. If you raise this hand, we can all see it in case the moderator, no offense, I'm sure you won't, in case you don't see it. If he has his hand raised, we can notice it and help you spot it. And I think with 15 people, we can still easily do that for anyone on that screen. 42, it might get a little tougher to see if anyone, whose hands is raised. But 15, we could definitely be able to see it. So I think this amendment could definitely alleviate a lot of concerns about making sure everyone participates appropriately.
Mr. Everett. I'm speaking to the amendment. You've already spoken on the article. You can speak on the amendment.
Of course. On the amendment, I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is, you know? 15 is a completely reasonable number. I think that the original one-third idea might have maybe made some people scared. And we should, as Mr. Sacks said, vote in favor of this amendment and vote in the bill. I might also add that one of the opponents to this bill has missed five meetings in the last two years.
It's personal attack, Mr. Everett. Please be quiet on that and sit down.
Apologies.
Mr. Davison. Mr. Glantz. I believe you're the last one who wants to talk on this, Nolan.
No pressure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan Glantz, Precinct 1. So I originally was not in favor of the amendment, but hearing all the comments, I think it's a good enough compromise because I think once we start doing this, we'll get more experience with it. We'll see what happens, then we can tweak it from there. I don't want to reiterate people's points that have already been made, but I've been doing this a long time and I've had a stellar record. The only times I've had to miss is if I've got work travel. And in fact, that's why I had to quit Ways and Means way back was because of work travel. And I think this would open up a lot of possibilities for a lot of people to be able to participate more, not less. I do this kind of meeting all the time for work. I had one this morning with 20 people in three different cities. And I had one, at the end of the day, with 57 people. It works. It totally works. And all those things that we said about raising hands and, and speaking up and taking turns, it all just works. So I hope we, we passed the amendment and the article. Thank you.
Now, does anyone have anything new to say that we haven't heard on this amendment? Something new?
My good. TJ Flynn, Precinct 2. The amendment sounds good to me. The article overall sounds good. I will say, I'm a new town meeting member, so I don't have any history with this. I will also say that I missed my first town meeting ever because I was on work travel. The government told me I needed to be somewhere. I had no choice in that. If that keeps coming up, I'm going to have to step down. This would be an option for me to participate going forward. In Precinct 2, there was nobody else running. I filled an open spot. If I step down, that's either going to be empty or maybe somebody else will run. I think we probably have an empty spot overall on town meetings. So I think this is a way to have people participate. I agree that when we can do it in person, we should. I wouldn't voluntarily do this online. I'd much prefer having these meetings in person. But having that option when somebody needs it, I think is, is good to have available.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Does anyone have anything to say on, strictly on the amendment? We don't say that. Don't, because then I have to call for a vote. There's nobody with a hand up. So I can put it through a vote. All those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? The amendment passes, which brings us back to the main article. As there are further discussion on the main article. If you've already spoken once, you don't get another bite till everybody else has talked. Mr. Davison.
Doug Davison, Precinct 2. In her summary, town council had some concerns about this article with respect to discrimination. And, and so could we hear from her? Are you still concerned or do you feel like we're okay here?
Town Council.
I would agree with Ms. Huntoun's explanation and her intent here that the ADA would supersede the limitations on those seeking to be excused.
Mr. Kelly.
Jack Kelly, Precinct 7. There was some concern raised about some of the side discussions. I find in meetings, that's called the chat, and we do it quite successfully. So I wouldn't worry about the little side discussions not being able to be in person. I'm, I'm in favor of this because I think that this gives, we're called a representative town meeting. I don't know that we'll ever be 100% representative of our population. But if we make it easier for some people who might not otherwise be able to attend, we will be a little more representative.
Ms. Byer. Then I'll get to Mr. Woods.
Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. I'm looking at this line that I have missed a town meeting before because I was sick and I couldn't get here. And the line about, I don't know, in the middle of the page, "Circumstances beyond the control of the town meeting member. Sickness, family death occurs and the number allowed to attend the remote access is not exceeded." I am concerned about the, the number and signing up ahead of time that people who are sick, if you, if you're already maxed out at 15 and you're sick, you don't get remote access. If you have something else come up or a last-minute work plan, you don't get remote access. And I don't know how that can or should be addressed. Thank you.
Ms. Huntoun, any comment on that?
So I would say that, as we all understand, this, the number needs to be limited. But right now, the number of people who can participate remotely, not based on ADA, is zero. So I would say 15 is better than nothing. And this does give you the opportunity. So the reason we put that in is to give an exception for the two-days-ahead notice. If there are spots still open, you can participate. If not, it's no different from what we're doing right now. But you at least have a chance.
Mr. Woods. Then we'll get to Mr. Hartley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Precinct 7. I'd just like to get an update from town council with respect to the state legislature's opinion on hybrid meetings. Have they approved them? Is it in limbo? If we approve this tonight and the state has not approved hybrid meetings, what happens?
So again, you have, the next article is the special legislation. So this won't take effect until your special legislation gets adopted. I do have concerns, as you noted in my letter, regarding the next article. But as was represented, there have been representative town meetings who have had hybrid options approved. The legislature has not taken any action on revising the open meeting law permanently. They continue to continue the special legislation that was adopted during COVID.
So if we approve Article 9 and 10, we're not in any violation of state statute?
Not, no, you won't be able to do it until the special act is approved, in which case you'll have your own act specific to Burlington.
Okay, I'm confused. So we approve, let's just say we approve 9 and 10, but until the state says it's okay, we can't do a hybrid meeting?
That's correct.
So 10 years from now, if the state still hasn't done anything, we still won't be able to do a hybrid meeting?
That's correct.
So we're going to spend all this time debating something that may not be approved by the state?
No, it's no different than any other special legislation you pass. So you're not waiting on the state legislature to take action on the overall open meeting law. You will be waiting on the legislature to take action on your special act, which is...
You will be waiting on the legislature to take action on your special act, which is Article 10.
Okay.
And you do that regularly.
Okay. And they're pretty good about reviewing this on a timely basis?
Well, that term is, you know, defined loosely, but yes, they do it more frequently. So, you know, within six months to a year typically.
Okay, thank you.
Chris Hartling, Precinct 3. So 15 to me, given how quickly this came back after it was defeated, I bet we'll be sitting here next September trying to raise it from 15. I'm still against this. I don't believe hybrid gives you the same level of discourse as an in-person meeting. Huge difference between a Ways and Means meeting and doing that hybrid versus something body of this size. It's not the same level of discourse, that's a fact. Two questions for the moderator. Why was this allowed to come back so quickly? And do we require that the cameras are on for anybody that tunes in remotely in a hybrid situation?
Run that by me again, Chris.
The question is, A, why was this allowed to come back so quickly? And B, when somebody tunes in remotely or in the event that this passes, will people be required to have cameras on so that they are visible for the entire course of the meeting? Or will they be allowed to have a blank screen? And, you know, for all we know, they're not even sitting there, or somebody else is sitting there. Are their faces required to be on the screen at all times?
It is allowed to come back because there's no restriction on it. It can come back whenever it wants to. We could kill it six times in a row, it could show up again the seventh. As far as, this article does not require people to have their cameras on. That may fall under the discretion of the moderator, in which case I would require it. We have to know, I mean, it's part of the, one of the original issues with hybrid meetings was security on who was voting and who was on the other end of the line. So we would, I would require them, whether they're asked for in this bylaw change or Point of information? What is it? Back here, please, microphone.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Does this allow participation by telephone? By telephone and not just by computer? I don't see anything in the language discriminating there.
Well, then I guess he'll have to come in person, Jack. Ms. Callahan, up at the back.
Adrian Callahan, Precinct 7. Just to clarify, how much is this going to cost? And is it per meeting, or is it just one general cost and that's what it is? Only because over COVID, I heard, you know, crazy numbers that it was $15,000 a meeting, blah, 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 blah. But what is the cost?
Ms. Hantoon, do we have, do we have a real number on what this will cost to us? Not just a guess.
I would have to defer to Mr. Martin on that.
And Mr. Martin, do we have a real number, not just an estimate or a guess?
When we brought this, excuse me, Scott Martin, Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee, when we brought you this article before, we did not have a real number. What we had was a total cost of running a town meeting. At least, that's what we appeared. There was some costs, there was an email that some people saw. You have to remember that what we're talking about is a year ago, and a whole bunch of money was spent by the school to bring things up to code that was included in that original cost number.
Does it not cost anything now?
It would be very, very minimal, because incrementally, we have to do everything right now, exactly that we do now, for the ADA complacency.
Per meeting?
Per meeting. It doesn't make any difference, because incrementally, incrementally, how much more do we have to spend if we add two people, or three, or four? Nothing, because we do it now. All right?
What is the number?
I don't know. Ask the school committee.
All right. That's. I can answer that. That's the answer. No one knows, no one has a number. Thank you very much. Can you hear me? I have a number.
David, it's David now.
Mr. Miller, do you have a real number?
Yes. The real number is zero. The money has already been spent. As mentioned before, Ken Gordon got Burlington in the state budget $100,000 to upgrade technology. And that money, not 100,000, like, less than 5,000 was spent to upgrade the auditorium for all this AV stuff, and that's what's in place now. So there is, from that point of view, there is no cost. It's done already.
I am going to recognize the town clerk who has been the one involved with this the most of anybody. Ms. Warfield.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is correct that we have included a piece of equipment that solves part of our problem. It will allow us to have multiple people, or it will allow us to run a better WebEx than we were able to do before. But one thing you may have noticed from tonight and on Monday, two things have happened. One thing is, because of how efficient, you may have noticed, the mics have been, we are paying a sound engineer to handle the board. The other problem is, because of child labor laws, we lose all of our teens at 10 o'clock. We were able to continue having a meeting because I have a sound engineer on that board running it. That's one cost. The other costs will be, the more, and this was the problem with what we did with hybrid, is that running hybrid, the one problem the AG has, is with all of our votes. So although there is an article that will look at the clickers and putting in some kind of a voting system, that, there are three companies that provide that service to Massachusetts communities. And in most cases, the towns either have two or three IT people internally that will run those, Lexington, for example, or they hire the company to help be the backup people, the tech people, for running the voting system. So that is another cost. Now, the initial cost of the clickers is fairly minimal. It's about $5,000. It's that additional cost with having them running at every meeting. Now, we can either figure out a way to enlarge our IT department and give them more support so that they could provide that to town meeting. Those are the costs that when, back in hybrid, in 2022, I came up with the fact that we had about 11 staff members who were giving their time to help run a hybrid town meeting. I can bet we will need, and again, because I do this a lot in my other life, I can bet we will need about six staff people for every town meeting, including, and maybe in addition to the AV students that are running mics and that kind of stuff. So those are the costs. Now, do we have a hard and fast cost on that yet? No. But I can give you ballparks if we want to talk about it at some point, other point in time. I don't have it with me right now. So those are the additional costs. The problem with technology is, we all think it's wonderful when it works, and we all hate it when it doesn't work. And as you guys have been discussing now for about an hour plus, the technology was not working. David Miller could not see what was going on. He could hear, and he's very technologically savvy. He was hanging in there. But you may have noticed that we, all we had for the longest time was a BeCAT emblem. We finally figured out what the problem was, and now BeCAT, now David can see the WebEx and see BeCAT. So that's our life that we deal with.
Thank you, Ms. Warfield. Can we have people who haven't spoken on this article still? Ms. Saltman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Murness Saltman, Precinct 2. There's maybe nine nights that we have to spend in this beautiful auditorium throughout the course of the year for town meeting. And of course, there's going to be a time when all 126 of us, for one reason or another, will not be here. In fact, tonight, we have 44 members who are not here. So maybe they're all traveling on business or whatever. The point being that there will always be nights when you can't be here. Do we have to change the whole system because work may take you out, or a sick child, or you may have a sick parent, or the dog might be ill? I mean, be realistic. You can miss a meeting, maybe two. Amy's very good about putting out the attendance. Seems we get re-elected every year anyhow, whether we're here or not. But the point is, I am not in favor of this change. Put your money where your mouth is. Show up in the auditorium. Thank you.
Mr. Sness, you've already spoken on the article. We have to wait till other people are done. Alex, have you spoken on this article? Just the amendment. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Ruffield, Precinct 5. So I'd like to, first of all, there's been a couple of comments. First, yes, people do have to miss these meetings. But from what I heard when I was running, is that a lot of people in town are actually upset that our attendance at these meetings isn't very good. So hybrid could definitely help with that. And trying to dismiss it as not a big deal is not what I was hearing when I was knocking on doors. Second of all, I heard people say like, oh, well, I had kids too, but I figured out how to get a grandparent there, I figured out how to get a babysitter. That's great? Not everyone can do that. I want to hear the people, I want to hear from people who live far away from their grandparents and don't have much of a backup child support system. I want to hear from the people who can't afford a sitter, because they're probably about $100 a night now. I want to hear from, you know, the ADA people. We get to hear from them. I definitely want to keep, continue hearing from them. I want to hear from the people who can't figure out how to get here because they can't afford a car, or they have another issue with their car, or they travel for work a lot. These are all people from the community that should get just as much a voice here as anyone else. And it wasn't really brought up tonight, but last time we discussed, people brought up, well, they can join other groups. And it's like, yes, but the people here can also join other groups involved in the town. And saying, and you're still kind of limiting their options by kind of shutting them out of this one, while you can still do virtually any of them, because your schedule and your transportation and your ability to show, and just the resources that you have at your disposal, just make it better, make it easier for you to come and show your influence. And we want to hear from the people who don't have that, just as much as we want to hear from you. And having hybrid is going to be extremely helpful with that.
All right. Does anyone have anything new to say? We've covered this pretty well. I'm looking for something new that we haven't heard before. Ms. Kim, do you have something new? And if you don't, I'm going to remember that. Let's get a microphone over here, please.
So I'm new, like TJ.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry, Christine Kim.
Who are you?
Precinct 4.
There we go.
I'm new, like TJ, obviously. I've gotten to know some people here that I didn't know before, that were strictly people that were behind a screen, behind a keyboard. Some that I agreed with wholeheartedly, some that I didn't agree with on things. But meeting people in person, I understand them, and even when I disagree with what they have to say or don't, I trust you. And others, maybe not as much, because I see how you are in person, I see your passion, I see your conviction, and it gives me pause to rethink my conviction. So I believe that you, when you make a commitment to things, you have to be there for them. Would I have liked to have done this when my kids were young? Yes. But the commitment was, you had to be here and be here, all of you. So I do appreciate that we've made a compromise. I do prefer this. But I just wanted to say that, that in person. And then I kind of changed my mind, because when the person that was on the screen, whose name I don't know, I don't know, because I don't see him here. I couldn't even hear what he was saying, because I was too busy looking around, because I like to see you when you speak, no matter what, for or against. I like to see your face. I know who you are. I know your passion. So I couldn't see his. And I couldn't even hear him, because I was too busy looking around. So that's another example of why we need to be here in person. And then I say, move the question?
No, you can't.
Did I say that? No?
You can't do that after you've spoken. Again, looking for something new. Mr. Murphy, you've already spoken on this once. And we have got, we've got new people still. Ms. Laurie, you've already spoken on it once. Ms. Asher, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kate Asher, Precinct 4. I just want to address the capabilities of being able to run the meeting hybrid because of the example of COVID, and we know that that won't be the last time, right? We've heard that. And so improving our capabilities to handle a COVID-like event, or maybe a major flu outbreak or something like that is another reason.
Jeff DeBona, Precinct 5. Motion to move the question.
Well, everybody else who's had their hand up and already spoken also, so I can go back to someone. Well, the question has been moved. It's not debatable. It's a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your hand. To move the question? What we're voting on is to move the question. Do you wish to move the question?
It's right on the screen.
See? It's right there. All right, thank you. All those opposed? It's clearly a two-thirds majority, which brings us to a vote on the amendment. Excuse me, on the amended article. Actually, was it amended? No, it wasn't. The amended, the article as presented. Okay.
As amended. Article 15.
It wasn't amended?
Yes, it was. 15. Passed.
Oh, 15.
Yeah. Article as amended.
See, that's why I have, will have someone here to make sure I know what I'm doing. Okay. All those in favor of the amended article, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I think we're going to have to go to a standing count on this. Mr. D'Nizio, could you have the couple people who have, can count with their shoes on? All those in favor, please stand.
20.
Minus two. All right. I got 58. Okay. All those opposed, please stand. There'll be 58 in favor, 37 opposed. The article passes. I heard my name. Ms. Angelo. Please use the microphone, Ms. Angelo.
I was trying to get recognized and you didn't. I wonder if Amy could bring in the numbers for the engineer and what else it's going to be involved in a hybrid meeting? She said that there are other expenses and she didn't have them with her. Could she bring them in Wednesday? So at least we know what we're going to be looking at Monday. Okay, Monday.
Well, hopefully, we're not here Monday, but we'll get you the information. 58 in favor, 37 opposed. It's a, it's a simple majority. It's not a 2/3s. Okay. Article 10. No, Article 10 is the home rule petition to send what we just talked about to the legislature. Any discussion on it? All those, Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Eiler, Precinct 6. I take issue with your, your statement there. It isn't what we just voted on being sent to the legislature. It's more all encompassing. So in particular, there's a couple discrepancies. One is, it says that all may attend remotely. It doesn't say anything about a limit there. So it's sort of contradictory with what we just passed. The other thing is, this article doesn't, as Ms. Meade pointed out, doesn't talk about just town meeting. It says all boards and commissions have to be hybrid now also. So that's a significant expansion from what we just talked about. And I'll suggest requiring all of our boards and commissions to have hybrid meetings also is a pretty significant extra burden. It weighs and means. We had no problem doing remote meetings. As Mr. Campbell pointed out, we did that all the time. And that worked just fine. But there may be other boards that maybe are meeting in rooms that don't have video conferencing equipment. Maybe there's no Wi-Fi there. It may not be as technologically feasible to do that. I think there's also an issue, notwithstanding what Town Council said. These articles don't explicitly talk about quorum, or don't, and don't explicitly talk about remote members being treated identically to present members. So I would argue that there's an open issue as to whether remote members count towards, count towards quorum or not. The open meeting law specifies that they do not, except that that's been extended, that will expire in May, that extension that allows them to be counted. So I would suggest that, that one might infer that perhaps quorum will count remote members, but it's not explicitly talked about. So I think there's a couple extra things that are thrown into this article that are both an expansion and inconsistent with the previous article that makes it a little, a little shaky to pass as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Further comments on that? Yes, ma'am. You, yes. Ms. Walensky?
Sarah Walensky, Precinct 5. I'd like to, I voted in favor of the amendment, but I also noticed another inconsistency. The communications platform will allow users to connect via video, audio, phone, and chat. That's also a significant broadening beyond just WebEx or other Zoom-like platforms. I really can't imagine someone meaningfully participating via chat in town meeting. So I don't really see how this article works with the one we just passed.
Ms. Hantoon.
Yes. I'm going to try to relay this clearly. So what allows us to operate our meetings remotely now for different boards and committees? That is through the state and that expires next March. It's my understanding that Article 10 seems more expansive because it's designed to include that. But Article 9 is specifically explaining how town meeting would be run. So they aren't in conflict. This is a bit more overarching to touch on how other boards and committees are able to meet. Does that make, that make sense? Okay.
Mr. Sinessi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I sort of tried to fly low to the radar because I was hoping that this vote just went back quickly. But some people bring up good points, but I feel it's my duty as the Chair of the Rules Committee to say that Rules Committee, this, three voted in favor and four voted against on the Rules Committee on this one.
This is true. And I forgot to ask, check in with Bylaw Review Committee. Oh, yeah, I did. I did already. You said 5-0. That's all right. Yeah, I assume you voted in favor of Article 10.
5-0-0.
Thank you. All right. I guess we, further comments on this? Mr. Boyven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. The question came up about how is it possible to participate via chat? When we were doing remote meetings during COVID, I actually submitted a written amendment via chat, which was then accepted, me, I guess under my electronic signature or whatever. So it is possible.
Further comments? Ms. Byer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. I'm confused by this because earlier you said that you would require that people's faces be seen during town meeting for votes, that we can see people online so that we can see who is voting and know that that vote is legitimate. And this seems to open this up so that it is not restricted. So I would like to know how that would be addressed.
Ms. Hantoon.
So the way this is written, again, is for boards and committees. I would say that audio phone participants would be members of the community. So this opens it up to have resident participation. Right now, when we have people dial into our Bylaw Review Committee meetings, they don't have to have their video on, but all members of the committee do.
Mr. Lieber. Oops, sorry.
So this applies only to committees? This applies to all of town meeting, and it does not specify.
Right. But the article right before it that we just voted on specifies for town meeting members.
That their face must be seen.
So that's the narrow one, and this is the broad one.
That their face must be seen, it specifies that?
That it's video conferencing. And I believe that as far as implementing a rule about the face, face must be seen and how that actually is implemented, I believe that's where Rules Committee would come in to further define any, any specifics on that. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but Rules Committee determines how the meeting is run and they, they implement a lot of those things. So I feel like it would fall to them to implement that and say specifically that a face must be shown.
Okay. Thank you. And I do want to say ZBRC has been running online meetings and has done very well with them because we can see up close how everything is put together. And so I do see how that would apply to the committees. Thank you.
Mr. Lieber.
So just a question for the legal counsel. So the language in the previous article states a town meeting member may attend via video conference. This one says the town meeting, you know, shall be accessible to all who wish to attend via, you know, will allow users to connect via video, audio, phone, chat. Does this mean that if someone is not allowed to attend via phone, that they could sue the town for, you know, going against the bylaws?
No, I think as Ms. Hantoon explained with regards to the town meeting, the bylaw is more specific with regards to town meeting. However, to your point, this applies to every other board and commission in the town. And the town will have to make all of them available in one of these electronic formats to everybody. It says all people who want to attend. Correct. But then town meeting has just passed a bylaw to limit it more specifically.
Mr. Riggs.
Roger Riggs, Precinct 3. In a lot of our meetings, the Chair of the meeting is responsible for maintaining order, recognizing speakers. And so I don't know whether to assume that that is still a baseline regardless of the technology used to bring people in. If so, then I guess I'm sort of okay with this. But if there are other, and I think earlier versions of this made it explicit that it was up to the Chair of the meeting to conduct the meeting and decide whether or not it could be remote and how to deal with it. It is important that the Chair of the meeting be able to conduct the meeting in an orderly and, and conductive, productive fashion. So if there's anything that assumes that you can't, I'm a little leery of saying that, you know, some other committee is going to make some rules that'll end up somewhere somehow in, I guess, I don't know if it has to go back through the general bylaw to get adopted, but that hasn't been proposed and it's not on the table. So I guess I'm a little cautious about that. I'd be happier if this was settled before we have to vote on it. Thank you.
So under the existing open meeting law, the Chair has the authority to run the meeting and choose how the meeting's going to be run. Under this proposed special act, which would ostensibly override the open meeting law, it requires the Chair to hold a meeting open to all under one of these or multiple electronic formats. So the Chair would not have a choice if this were passed. I would add to that, right now, for example, you can post a meeting electronically. Let's say the planning board is going to post a meeting electronically, or hybrid meeting, and all of their members are going to be present. They can put on their agenda that if there's technical difficulties, that the meeting's going to continue, that it's expected. If you really want to participate in the meeting, you come in person. I question whether you could do that under here if this special act were passed.
There's a couple selectmen here. Has this article would apply to all selectmen meetings? Have the selectmen taken a position or discussed this? Thank you. No, no vote from the Select Board. Mr. Collins.
Hi, Dan Collins, Precinct 6. So the last one I voted against mainly because of just this unknown cost thing. We just passed a bylaw and we essentially just committed to a cost that we don't know. This seems to me like we might be doing the same thing again, where we're committing to a cost and something that we just don't know what's happening. If, if we're now going to be requiring all committee meetings be accessible electronically, if somebody wants to be, then we're now kind of committing a technological thing that we, we might not be able to accommodate without yet again, another spending or bill or some sort of thing. It seems like we're, we're putting the cart before the horse on both of these things.
Ms. Hantoon.
So the reason why that's in here is because it's something we're already doing. A lot of the committees are already doing it. That's, that's in place. I know there are some committees that are opting out of doing that. That, the ability to do that comes from the state right now. And like I said earlier, that authority expires next March. So this is just to allow and to require all of the committees to jump on board with being able to do this. And it's, it's very simple and it runs very smoothly. At least for our committee, I understand zoning by law review runs this. I'm not sure what the breakdown is as far as what committees would need to get up to date with this and actually be able to do it. But I wouldn't, and I'm, I'm very reluctant to estimate costs and to make any commitments there, pretend I know. But I would imagine that it would not be much of an additional cost at all because we're doing it already.
Ms. Waddilla, please.
Hi, Dave Waddilla, Precinct 1, also Chairman of the Land Use Committee. I would like to make a motion to postpone this article until January town meeting. That's a motion on the floor.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to postpone. And a second discussion on the postponing, Mr. Monaco? Okay, you, sorry, Mr. Waddilla, you can comment on your, your motion.
As, as Chair of the Land Use Committee, okay. Granted, we're not Ways and Means. We're a lesser committee, but we're still a committee in the town. And this, this article would presumably affect our committee. We have no access right now to any of the IT infrastructure in the town. We come to the committee, we, we log onto the, the network, but it's with a personal computer. We have no access, no ability, no training on the infrastructure in the town, the, the meeting consoles, the TVs, anything like that, right? We are flatfooted here if we move forward with this in every way possible. We should wait. We should come back with a little bit more on the cost. We should come back with a little bit more vision of how this is actually going to play out with all the committees, with everybody that will now be mandated to have to run their committees in this way. Otherwise, right, we're just going into the great unknown here. Sure, yeah, but we'll figure it out, I guess. But, you know, I'd rather know what we're getting into so we can vote appropriately on this than to just go blindly into the abyss. Thanks.
Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. I completely agree with Mr. Waddilla. Until every and any committee that's affected by this has a chance to say something and get, you know, taken care of, it doesn't make sense for us to be approving this as town meeting. We really don't know what we're doing to them. That's the first thing I'd say. And then I have a question, maybe more for counsel, but it, does it really make sense to defeat this second article when we've just passed the town meeting article? In other words, I think we're on a year-by-year basis if we defeat this, but we've already passed the hybrid town meeting. Have I got that right? You know, what's going on here? Yeah. What are the ramifications of defeating this relative to the article we just passed? And I'd really like to hear from counsel on this. Thank you.
Ms. Meade, Town Counsel.
Because the rules of town meeting are through the special act, you have to amend both the bylaw and the special act at the same time. So you could propose an amendment that would say town meeting, that would reflect what you just passed, right? So you could say, you propose that town meeting be able to meet in a hybrid fashion in accordance with the adopted Article 9, and it shall be submitted to the legislature as a home rule petition. But otherwise, otherwise you're going to wait until, if this is postponed, you'll wait until January, and then that delays the first thing by three months.
three months.
Mr. Cormier. And we'll get to Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. As part of this and all the discussion, I really-- we still have not ironed out a true-- and it's been asked many times as far as the cost associated with-- we keep on hearing, and it's not much. And then we hear from Amy that says that, well, there's additional staff members and so on and so forth. I agree with Mr. Waddilla as far as postponing this until January, but in order for this to really kind of be properly discussed and debated come January, I want to see a detailed cost on what all of this is going to be because all we keep on hearing about is not much, and then you hear from someone else that says the cost is zero, which is absurd. And then we hear about additional staff being necessary, and then other committees that don't have that type of capability. So obviously, it's going to cost. So I would like to see a detailed cost come January. God willing, this amendment will pass in order to have an actual informed decision on whether we should move forward come January. Thank you.
What did I say I was going to? Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shari Ellis, Precinct 3. The first question I had momentarily before Town Counsel spoke was, should we pass the amendment as written? How would the Select Board's policy be affected by that? That question is kind of moot at the moment because we're postponing it. But should-- once we vote on this postponement, I would like to make an amendment to remove the language, as counsel noted, to only include Town Meeting. And that would take away all of the other bodies, and we would still have the Select Board policy that is in place, that committees can do it if they want to, and the in-person quorum remains. And then we can debate at a later time all the other boards and committees that would be mandated to do it. And I do have a statement on the mandating because it's not only the infrastructure of, as Dave Waddilla said, for land use, how to do it in the Town Atlantics or wherever you are, but it's also the storage of the meeting recordings. I'm storing them all for ZBRC on my own laptop. So therefore, my capability is getting lower and lower as I have more meetings. I'm going to stop having meetings because I'm going to run out of space. So those are a couple of comments, and I would like to make that amendment as Town Counsel spoke. I'm going to have to write that, aren't I? Darn. But we have to vote on the other one first. Thank you.
Mr. Sinessi. And then I'll come over to you, Nolan.
Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. I support Mr. Waddilla's motion to push this into January. And if I'm hearing you correctly, I know that you chair Land Use. I'm assuming that you do your meetings in the Town Hall Annex, correct? Anywhere you can get space. I know from-- in the past, from chairing some committees, that the Annex is usually my go-to. It's tough to get meeting space in the main hearing room, the Select Board. It's tough to get meeting space in the school committee room. I know I've said in the past-- I don't want to put Mr. Sagarino on the spot-- but I've made a suggestion that, you know, at some point, if we keep going this direction with the hybrids for committees and stuff like that, is it possible to get the Annex retrofitted? And I've heard from other Town Meeting members who are technology savvy that said it wouldn't cost that much. I would support kicking this into January and getting those types of cost estimates to be able to make this accessible to the subcommittees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. Ms. Ellis, you don't need to worry about your amendment if this is postponed. Your amendment will come out in January. Ms. Hantoon.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I would say that if we're looking at what's being discussed right now, I personally, as a Precinct 1 Town Meeting member, would prefer we don't postpone it, but that we vote to not postpone it and then vote on the amendment that Shari's going to present just because it takes care of that problem. And if we want to come back in January with something separate that addresses the boards, committees, and that, fine. But whereas we already voted on the Town Meeting aspect, I think it makes sense to make this mesh with that so that we can move forward with what the majority of this body already voted for. So I would say that we should not postpone this because we already know what the issues are, and we can take the time to find the common ground and separate them.
Mr. Debona, last hand up. Don't move the question because then we'll have to vote on it.
I'm not moving the question. No, I agree with-- sorry, Jeff Debona, Precinct 3. I agree with Mr. Waddilla's postponement. I think you guys need to go around and talk to some of these other boards, you know? We're doing this like, let's make a deal. Oh, well, let's pull out of this, let's just go-- you know, come on, let's just get this done. We don't need to make a decision willy-nilly on this. I chair a board in town, we would never talk to about any of it, you know? I think you need to go around and talk to all these other boards and come up with a concise answer of what direction everyone wants to go in, and let's just surprise everyone. I agree with the postponement.
Thank you. Ms. Callahan.
Adrian Callahan, Precinct 7. I don't understand the sense of urgency for this. I think that we've been having in-town meetings all this time, and I don't think postponing it is a big deal. It seems like we're kind of grasping at straws with what we're doing, and nobody knows in all the committees, and I just think it's unnecessary. We can, you know, get the cost, get the information, figure out what the committees are going to need to make this done, and then, you know, have the time to do that. If we have to come in person for one more meeting, we have to come in person for one more meeting. I don't think that's a big deal.
Thank you. Yes, right here.
Mimi Bix Highland, Precinct 1. I'm in favor of the amendment that Shari and Michelle are proposing. So, but I'm just voicing my opinion that I think the amendment suggested by Mr. Waddilla is one I don't support because I see an easy solution to this, which is not supporting that amendment in order to do a different amendment to separate Article 9, the Town Meeting article, from all these other ones that many of us agree need to be postponed for us to reach a consensus on. That's my point.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody have anything new to say on this, please? We're talking about-- no, we're talking about the postponement of this article. Mr. Kelly, something new? Not just your opinion, something new.
Jack Kelly, Precinct 7. Counsel has pointed out that it will take six months to a year for the legislature to approve this. I think in the intervening six months, we're as resourceful as the other towns who have managed to work with this. I would say just go ahead, vote this, and we can make changes in January if we have to, but let's get something moving rather than stalling the whole thing.
Excuse me, Mr-- I'm going to ask for Town Counsel comment on that.
If you pass the home rule petition and then it gets submitted, then you would have to amend the home rule petition that's pending at the legislature that hasn't yet passed, right? So you would delay it further, Mr. Kelly. So if you pass the home rule petition tonight, as it is, and you submit it to the legislature, then you come in January and you want to make a change to that, but that home rule petition is still pending at the legislature, right? Then you're amending a pending piece of legislation. I'm just suggesting that it might end up taking longer. That's all.
Okay, let's see where we are now. Is that another Mr. Debona up the back?
Rich Debona, Precinct 3. I thought we were supposed to be voting on the comment to postpone this.
We are--
And what I've heard is-- a question, I guess-- how does it make sense for us to vote on something we don't really understand and something that we're already going to amend at least once or twice in January? Where's the rush? I think we should postpone and get the data we need to make an informed decision, not come back and say, oh, I voted because I thought it meant this. No.
Okay, anything further? Well, can we take a vote on this? Mr. Glantz, something on postponing.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Nolan Glantz, Precinct 1. I agree with a lot of this, but I think a lot of the confusion, desire to delay and fine-tune it is because of the extra ramifications that we hadn't thought about. And there's an amendment that will remove all of that confusion and all of the other boards and bodies. And I think if you can read the proposed amendment, then perhaps the desire to postpone might go away. So I think that that amendment affects my decision of whether to postpone.
No, I have-- we have to vote on what's-- on the article, on what is in front of us. And the amendment, I'm sorry, is not in front of us. You can say that it solves all the problems if you wish. Go ahead.
The amendment would remove all of the other-- if we don't delay, and we come back to, and then we can amend the motion, it would remove all the other boards and committees and all the obligations on them, and it would just be specific to what we thought we voted on 20 minutes ago, which was just to change Town Meeting. And that's all it would do. And Town Counsel drafted the language already. It's waiting there, so if we vote down the postponement, then we could amend the article, and then we can get what we all voted for 20 minutes ago.
Okay, what's in front of us is to postpone the article. So let's take a vote on that. All those in favor of post-- Ms. Byer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. I want to say I'm fully in support of what Mr. Waddilla proposed and what he wants to do. However, I am going to vote against postponement, and if there is not another amendment, then I will vote against this article unless it's amended. So that is the straight path that I'm looking at right now. Thank you.
Mr. Monaco, you also had your hand up. That's a good idea. Let's vote on this. All those in favor of postponing this article? You know, I'm going to need a standing count on this. All those in favor of postponing, please stand. Thank you. Okay, all those opposed to postponing, please stand. There being 50 in favor, 41 opposed, the motion to postpone succeeds. Excuse me? 50 in favor, 41 opposed. All right, let's move on to Article 11. Marina, point of information, do we need a Marina minute? All right, we got a Marina minute.